This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, November 23rd. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Gregory West. We have both Missionary Baptist Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord who enlightens, we ask for your supernatural wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help the city council to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help them to be innovative and as we brainstorm solutions, help them to wisely evaluate others' options considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out for the residents and the people of the city of Mobile and bring unity where there's division, bring honesty where there's dishonesty. We ask all of this now in Jesus' name, amen.
Our presentations to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
But this is a beautiful morning that the Lord has given us and we have a lot of things to be thankful for. You know, this coming Thursday, we will be celebrating Thanksgiving, but every day should be a day of Thanksgiving. And this morning, we also had the Order of Doves. The council had, and the mayor had opportunity to take pictures with them. Thank you all so much for coming to our meeting this morning. Statement of rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has a cell phone at this time or any electronic device, I ask at this time to please put on the off or the vibrate position. The off or the vibrate position. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing the second bell in case the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of November 17th. So moved.
Second.
May I properly move in second? In the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. Good to see everybody this morning. Appreciate you taking time to come down and join us today. For those who maybe didn't witness it this past Friday night, we had the lighting of the Christmas tree at Mighty Grove Park. It was a huge, huge crowd there. Great weather, food, vendors showing up, but really a very happy crowd to start celebrating a holiday season. Really want to thank Parks and Rec for putting that event together, but also our Facilities Maintenance Group who has the responsibility of erecting the tree each year. If you think back about five or six years ago, we weren't even having this event and for it to have evolved into what is one of the most anticipated events in the city now is really gratifying. So thanks to Parks and Rec, Facilities Maintenance, but more so thanks to all the citizens that joined us. So many children, Santa Claus, anyway, it's a good way to start off the holiday season. Recently, the city of Mobile was recognized for the way we will be distributing our ARP funds. The People First Plan, and that's how we rolled it out, saying exactly what we would do with these funds. And the recognition was by the Southern Economic Advancement Project, SEEP for short. It's a strong proponent of the responsible spending of ARP across the southeast. They included Mobile as one of the good examples in a report, which was later given to Treasury in recognition of what we have done. Part of that is because we reacted quickly because we have a grants department that is in place and also mechanisms in place for the deployment of capital that's come through CDBG and other grants in the past. So I really want to thank the city council for supporting the People First Plan and the Grants Department and all those who, from this point going forward, will help to continue to deploy those monies into the community. One of those examples would be that we have finally completed the contracts for rental and utilities assistance. We'll be partnering with Housing First, Mobile Community Action, and Legal Services of Alabama to help those citizens hardest hit by the COVID-19 pandemic. We have applications available at the city libraries and very soon we'll have it located at our rec centers. And applications are also available on our website and through social media. So if you have the need for rental assistance or utility assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to those organizations or to the city. This coming Saturday, I think there's a football game this weekend. And I won't say Roll, excuse me, but anyway, in case you were confused, I see a lot of orange up there. Does that have anything to do with that other team? That's Tennessee colors. Okay, okay. Anyway, but the Parks and Rec Department, this Saturday at 4:00 PM in Cathedral Square, we'll be having a small business outdoor holiday market. And this will be where small businesses can come, show their wares, have a small tent so that people, potential shoppers, you know, can come buy those wares. We are, to be able to have a tent and to display your goods and so forth, you've got to have, be accepted through an application process. And we will accept applications all the way through this Wednesday, but you can go on the city website to find out more about how you can apply. There should be a very big crowd downtown. We have an event for the Alabama Auburn game, somewhat of a street party. And so those who choose to come, set up their wares and display them, I really hope that you'll be successful in that endeavor. Anyway, big weekend coming up. I would just say I want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, we're very fortunate as we come to the holiday season of Thanksgiving this Thursday, and I hope that you'll stop and be thoughtful about those maybe who are less fortunate than us and be able to reach out to them and help them in some form or fashion, but also thank God for all that he's done for us, our families, and for the city of Mobile. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Prime, who will deliver the Officer of the Month Resolution and Recognition, and then he'll be followed by Chief Lamy, who will deliver it for the firefighter of the month. So Chief Prime.
Thank you, Mayor, staff, city council. Good morning. This is Officer Paul Caligari. He's the Officer of the Month for October of 2021. He's been a Mobile police officer for nearly three years, and he is currently assigned to Central Precinct in the downtown district. Some notable comments, and I'll make them brief, but he stopped a wrong-way driver downtown, turned out to be severely under the influence and DUI. Also had a weapon on him. He made 22 felony arrests, 62 misdemeanors, issued 77 traffic citations. But what's important with this young man is out of the 22 felony arrests and with all the violent crimes that we've had in the city of Mobile, he personally took 17 illegally possessed firearms off the streets just for the month of October. And I'll say this, and I was telling the mayor earlier, this is one of the young men that we have that really is the epitome of the professionalism that we're looking for, attitude, appearance, competence, and service. And when I say those things, those are the tenets of professionalism, and with that, you're seeing it here. This young man gives 100% every single time he comes to work, and I know that because every time we get a complaint, we have to watch his body-worn camera, but he does it every single time with the utmost professionalism. And for that, I am honored to stand here before you and offer Officer Caligari as Officer of the Month.
Good morning. So today, I wanted to recognize fire service driver Terry Fleming. He's been with the department for over 20 years, and he was promoted to fire service driver in 2015. He used to be, along many moons ago, in the Marine Corps, but then they realized that he was more intelligent and needed to be in the Army. So they moved him over to the Army where he served his country, so we want to thank him for that as well on the backside of Veterans Day. But I didn't really want to point to one specific thing that Terry Fleming's done, but I will tell you, our three core values, like the police, they're focusing on professionalism. Our three core values are courage, competence, and compassion. And there is not another individual on our department that possesses those more so than Terry Fleming. But just to reiterate that point, I think if you went to the comments page on our Facebook when we announced Terry Fleming is a fire service driver, you will see the comments of encouragement and the recognition of our men and women on the department that recognize how much compassion he does show each and every day, not only to the members of the department, but also to the public that he serves. This guy right here cares about people, and I think that's the biggest quality, is the size of his heart. So he's a big guy, but his heart's even bigger. But it's with great pleasure that I wanted to recognize him today as the October firefighter of the month. One final note, I will say this. Terry and I were assigned together for several years at Station 14, located on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. So if you want to know any backstory about my career or his, he has all the details, okay?
Councilman Penn.
Good morning. I'm excited today to give my first proclamation. A lot of people ask me, why are you wearing orange all the time? What is that signature color? Well, there is for John L. LaFlore, the greatest high school in the world. And so today, where I asked, on November 26 to 28, 2021, the Tomaville LaFlore Alumni Association will host the annual alumni weekend, which is one of the largest alumni events in the nation. John L. LaFlore Magnet High School of Law, Arts, and Health Sciences is a historic public school located in the Tomaville community, Mobile, Alabama, and accredited by the Southern Association of College and Schools. And from 1968 through 1980, the school was known as Tomaville High School, offering secondary education to the upper-middle class students. Wherein, the Tomaville suburb, in 1981, the school was renamed John L. LaFlore Magnet High School in honor of Mr. John L. LaFlore, Mobile WACP leader elected to the legislature in Mobile County. Mr. LaFlore, the most significant figure, one of the most significant figures in the struggle for African-American equality in Mobile along on the Gulf Coast, serving leadership positions for many organizations, ranging, and in his 50-year career as a community leader and civil rights activist, helped Mobile become more permanent, educational, financially, personally, racially, and socially. Now therefore, I, Corey Penn, District 1, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim November 26 and the 28, 2021, as the Tomaville LaFlore Alumni Days, and Mobile urge all our citizens to join us in celebrating this momentous occasion done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 23rd day of November 2021.
I would like to say we have one of our school board members present this morning, Ms. Sharon Met Day. I think she taught at LaFlore for 100 years also.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Yes, I will. Good morning. I bring you greetings from the Executive Board of the Tomaville LaFlore Alumni Association. Our association was started many years ago and was built on the reputation that we did well by our students, and our students went out into the country, into this world, and represented that small community in Tomaville well. As Mrs. Penn stated earlier, we are recognized as one of the largest national high school alumni association that gives back. We started off our very first year with a donation of $14,000. The last time we met and we had our group alumni gathering, we gave back to that school in Tomaville that's located at 700 Donald Street, $113,000 from a public high school in Mobile, Alabama. Our goal as an organization is to give back. We have a party for a purpose. And when we say we party for a purpose, we give back to the Tomaville community. Not only are we giving back to feed the community themselves, but we have our alumni classes that donate socks, they donate underwear. They donate also back to our students, and that's what our goals are. We are being productive. We want our students to be productive, and I can look at Corey, who's our graduate of LaFlore. I can look at Anita Bill Henderson, who is also a graduate of LaFlore. I always tell people that as a former educator from LaFlore High School, that we run the world. And I mean that honestly, with all my heart, we run the world. And I always tell, after meeting with Mayor Henderson, I told him that we're going to run Mobile, so get prepared for that. Again, we thank the council and the mayor and the city of Mobile for having us. We accept this proclamation with sincere sincerity, and we hope that if you're not busy doing anything on Saturday, come out to Tomaville, again, 700 Donald Street, and see what we're all about. Have a great day.
At what time is the parade on Saturday?
Our parade starts at 11:00, starting from historical Tomaville High School now known as Just For. Any other questions, Mr. Small? Since you lived in Tomaville, but you didn't attend, I wonder why.
Thank you, Commissioner Met Day. Y'all have a good time on Saturday.
Monthly finance report.
Hey, good morning. I'm sorry that Chief Lamy left after that remark he made about the intelligence level of Marines, but I'll find him and we'll get pay out of him. Anyway, I just thought today I would kind of give you a quick recap of how the city did in September and how we did in October. I mentioned the last time that we had a council meeting that the month of September would be a difficult month, as it usually is, because we have a lot of accruals that normally get billed in the following month because that's when the invoices come in, but in September, we true up and we bring those back into September. So that tends to make September a difficult month for us, and this year was the same. But anyway, revenue-wise, I think you might find it interesting, in the month of September, our sales tax revenue was 16.2 million dollars, and that was quite a bit better than the previous couple of months. Year-to-date, though, and this is really the big number, $185 million for the fiscal year. Our budget for the year was only 156 million, so we came in ahead of plan on our sales revenue by almost $30 million. And really, we've talked about that before. I think it's really a function of the kind of reverse effect of the COVID because the stimulus checks and the confinement mainly to home, it really forced people to stay at home and I think really spend more money than they would have otherwise. Now, in October, we started out at a pretty good month also. Our sales tax revenue was 16 million, 16.3 million for the month, and that's about $2.9 million better than our budget. So so far, for the last two months, our revenue and our sales for sales taxes have been doing pretty well. Total revenue for the year, and this is a good one because I think this is an all-time record, year-to-date and at the end of September, our total revenue was $306 million, and our budget was 265. So we came in about $41 million ahead of budget. And as we talked about it before, you know, it's a combination of things. It's a combination of revenue being higher than we budgeted and also our spending being less than what we had budgeted. And between the two, that's the main reason we were able to run the capital surplus up to the number that we did. And let's see, okay. And so we already talked about the year-to-date for October. So I don't want to really speak too much about each of the operating department's performance in October, because as I mentioned before, we're moving a lot of things around as we balance for the fiscal year. Next month, I'll get back into that. But bottom line is, I think everybody's doing a pretty good job of managing their costs so far. The one thing I thought I would tell you real quick is at the end of August, before we moved into September, the final year for accounting, we had a surplus of 137. We pulled $30 million out, as you know, for the airport, and then we had a year, a month of September, which was kind of difficult. So anyway, but netting all that out at the end of October, we're really only $2 million below where we would have been had we not paid that $30 million into the capital fund for the airport. So all in all, pretty good, even for a difficult September. The last thing I just want to talk about real quick is that, you know, it's going to be an interesting year this year. We have a lot of things going on, as you can see. You know, back in August, I think we were talking about a GDP of almost 7%. Right now, the latest forecast is looking at 4%. So there's been a lot of change over the last couple of months. I think the surge in COVID in September had an effect on that, but also I think there's uncertainty among the Fed about just where things are going to go, given the circumstances. But even 4% at least in recent history is a pretty good number. Interest rates, not too much of a change forecasted yet, but inflation, that's become the big issue right now. And, you know, last October, I mean, last August, when we were talking, we were talking about a 2% inflation, I mean, interest, I mean, I'm sorry, inflation rate, and now, you know, it's looking maybe 5%. And so it's something that we need to be concerned about and we'll have to watch as we go forward. And but anyway, all in all, we're doing pretty well to get started, and I'm looking forward to having another positive year. So any questions?
Counsel.
I'm Mike.
Ms. Carroll.
You said that we were $41 million ahead of the projected sales tax revenue?
Oh, $41 million ahead in our revenue for the month of, for 2021.
Just for budgeting purposes, when we get to that time of year, where in the budget would I track this? Because there's a, if I remember right, there's the surplus line, there's a reserve line, and then where's the rest? Because there's only so much that we normally show in that reserve line, so where are we showing the rest of the funds that are above and beyond?
Okay, well, the revenue, you would see every month. Every month, we will publish a financial statement for the month. We'll put it online, the accounting department does. And then that month pretty much is a summary of everything we did that month, and it compares it to the previous month, and it compares it to budget, and it compares it to the previous year, and we do the same thing on an annual basis. So if you want to look at how we're doing year-to-date, just go to the, and I can show you where it is, the monthly financial statements that are published and put online for the council.
I'm asking because I know, I just want to know where the reserve is, where the surplus is.
Okay, the reserve will be in the same report. The reserve will be on the first page of that, where the surplus will be on that first page of that report. It's kind of like an income statement, and it'll show you what the beginning balance was in the surplus, and it'll show you what the ending balance was at the end of that month. And I'll show you that if you want.
And when it comes to budget time, the budget will show that, so those same items?
They'll show the same items too in the budget, yeah. But you gotta remember, month to month varies. The budget is going to be a year-over-year picture from one year to the next, so.
I understand. I just want to see how, and the reason why I'm asking is because I was looking at the last three years, and I'm hearing that we have $137 million worth of reserve, but I don't see it all on the published budget. So I'm asking, where is the balance, is what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. You may not see the budget surplus. Let me think. If you will see it in the budget, but you will see it in the financial statements.
On the budget, it doesn't all add up to what we're saying we have.
No, you have to look at the financial statements for the surplus.
So I just want it all to add up, and it'd be fair if the public's following this the same way, that it all add up, but right now it doesn't. So I'm just asking, where is it shown?
I think maybe, and this is something most people don't look at, but if you take a look at the balance sheet and the income statement that's published every month, then maybe.
Okay, I mean, just show me when we get it.
Yeah, I'll show you.
And I might be incorrect, but.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Another council member.
Yes, Director Holt. On this year's budget that was approved just prior to us taking office, we accounted for GDP at approximately, what percent? It wasn't at 7%.
Oh, the Fed was forecasting as much as 7% back in June.
And so we're expecting that to be around 4% for the remaining.
That's the revision that of the September Federal Reserve meeting.
Right, so is that going to have a major impact on our, and obviously, you know, inflation at 2% in October, as you said, and then it's looking like it's going to be around 5%. Are those going to impact our budget in a significant way where we would need to pull down money from the reserve or from these surplus funds?
At this point, I would say no. At this point, I would say no. I think it's kind of early, and I think the government will step in to take measures to kind of reel in the inflation as it goes forward. There's still a lot of uncertainty out there, but right now, I wouldn't predict after one month, any major changes in the budget or in the performance of the city right now, especially after October. I'm surprised that it came in as strong as it did.
Yeah, Ms. Carroll.
Yeah, just to say, you guys are doing a great job when it comes to holding and saving and reserving money. I mean, we're at a perfect place to do a whole lot of things with the effort that's gone into it. You know, sometimes I just kind of want to see where things are so I know what I'm looking at also.
That's okay.
Just know that we're okay, all right?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. And anytime you all, any of y'all want to sit down with the team and myself, we'll be glad to do that. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
May I properly move in second? In the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Agendas adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on January 27 on South Joakim Street, December 3 through the 5 in Herndon Sage Park, and December 18 in Melvahana Park.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We're promptly moved in second and in discussion. All in favor? In opposed, motion passes.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to rezon property located at one sixty-two and one eighty-six East Drive from R one to R two.
This open up the public hearing for one sixty-two and one eighty-six East Drive. If anyone present would like to address this counsel, I ask at this time, if you please come before I state your name and address. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezon property located at the south terrace of Bowden Road from R one to I one.
Again, this is public hearings open for Bowden Road. If anyone here present to address the council, you may do so at this time by addressing us with your name and your address. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the vacation of Riceaway located in the Carondeley apartment complex, forty-six twelve Spring Hill Avenue.
Yes, this public hearing is not open. If anyone here to address the council may do so at this time, state your name and address as you come before.
Good morning. Thornton Ratliff, twenty-nine fourteen Linden Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-zero-nine. Thank you. And I represent, thank you staff, thank you council, represent the property's owner in our request to vacate a public road which really just serves our residents and would like to make capital improvements to the property, our ability to gate the property, construct leasing offices, make siding, roof replacements, interior improvements, would feel much more secure if we were able to vacate the road and thus make this more secure property for our residents and occupants.
Any question on the council?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the information. I was brought up to speed some time ago on the project, and it sounds like a real positive thing for that apartment complex, so I just appreciate you being here and providing the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here present for this particular public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Reggie Hill regarding resolution zero-one-ten-twenty-two, zero-one-ten-forty-six, and forty-seven-zero-eight-ten-forty-eight.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Citizens and stakeholders in Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. I want to combine, excuse me, my remarks with zero-eight-one-zero-two-two and zero-eight-one-zero-four-eight. The council president, who is now deceased, worked towards getting an inventory list from our Public Works Department, so I'm hoping now that somebody will be willing to follow up on that and see what the administration is willing to offer regarding that information. I believe a lot of the questions that we would have related to vehicles could be answered if we know what was in the inventory list. We see constantly, usually week after week, purchases of vehicles, and we don't really know what they've been used for, nor that we know the state of the existing equipment within the city. So if somebody could be so kind to follow up on that, I think that'd be very appreciated. And the reason why we tie into zero-eight dash one-zero-four-eight is because it might be something different that's presented to you all, but the citizens have no price amount on the fueling that is being used or where those fuels will be allocated towards or what departments they're going to, what vehicles will be beneficial because of that item. So if somebody is willing to give some information pertaining to how much that is going to be, that'd be greatly appreciated as well. When we're looking at zero-one dash one-zero-four-six, we've been hearing the possibility of TIF funding being thrown around. I would like to have an explanation of that towards the city so the public can understand exactly what that is, as well as is there a particular district that's already been assigned as it relates to this agenda item or anything that might be coming before this body, and the streetscape improvement projects as well. Just some type of information, I was a little behind on pre-council, so this may have been discussed this morning, I'm not sure, but we're not, excuse me, afforded opportunity to see that online right now, so we're depending on members up here sharing that with us. So we could have some information on that, and it's the one million dollars that broken down for labor or particularly for the product and the project of what that is that's going on. And largely, the zero-one dash one-zero-four-seven, the hundred and fifty K, while I'm extremely excited to see new opportunities coming to this community that has been crying out for generations, I know since I was little, but we still have no clarity on who is kind of overseeing this project as it moves forward. So now that there's a municipal and county collaboration here, I'm hoping that somebody as well will address those matters so we can kind of get an idea of how this is going forward, who's at the forefront, how the decision's being made, and how these resources being allocated to ensure that the citizens of the area are the ones who benefit and not necessarily those who could take advantage of this moment. So thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Resolutions held over. There are no objections. I'll take all of these together. Zero-one-ten-twenty-one authorize South Alabama Regional Planning Commission sale contract. Zero-eight-ten-twenty-two approve purchase order toward International four-two tandem axle dump trucks. Twenty-one-ten-twenty-three authorize contract with Speaks and Associates Consulting Engineers for woodcut drainage repairs. Twenty-one-ten-twenty-four authorize contract with E. Cornell Malone Corporation for Hurricane Roof Repairs at Mobile Civic Center Arena. Twenty-one-ten-twenty-five authorize contract with Technology Integration Group for remote and onsite engineering support on computer network security, architecture, and configuration.
So moved.
Second.
We're promptly moved in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, those resolutions passed.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-four-zero-three-nine through sixty-four-zero-forty.
By council rules, these ordinances will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced zero-three-ten-thirty-seven through thirty-seven-ten-fifty-seven.
Move to waive the rules in order to consider resolutions zero-three dash ten-thirty-seven through thirty-seven dash ten-fifty-seven.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We're promptly moved in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, passes.
Zero-three-ten-thirty-seven and ten-thirty-eight are appointing Levy D. King III to the Alabama Special Care Facilities Financing Authority and reappointing Eddie Burrow to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Twenty-one-ten-thirty-nine correct resolution twenty-one-seven-twelve awarding a contract to builders for the Church Street Cemetery West wall repairs to show the correct amount as thirty-three thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. Thirty-seven-ten-forty and ten-forty-one are recommending approvals at ABC Board for issuance of a beer wine off-premise is only license for Tillman's Corner Chevron on Highway ninety and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Eddie's Mexican and Honduran Restaurant on Government Boulevard. Fifty-eight-ten-forty-two, ten-forty-three, and ten-forty-four are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing cost for removal of weeds, groups sixteen-twenty-one, sixteen-twenty-two, and sixteen-seventeen. Sixty-ten-forty-five approval award a special bonus to the officer of the month for October. Thirty-seven-ten-fifty-seven recommend approvals at ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for Lit Cigar Lounge.
So moved.
We're promptly moved in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Resolutions being introduced zero-one-ten-forty-six through sixty-ten-fifty-five.
Council rules these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings, forty-one-ten-fifty-six call for public hearing to consider issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Myra Darrenton doing business at Scott's Carrier to operate a sedan service scheduled December seventh.
So moved.
We're promptly moved in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, public hearings called.
Announcements.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes, brief announcement. Just want to wish all my colleagues and everyone in the city and all the citizens alike a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Councilman Penn?
Same for me. I would like to wish District One, City of Mobile, a definitely happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family. Also, the Tomerville Alumni Weekend is going, is happening after Thanksgiving, so we have a parade starting at eleven o'clock in the Tomerville Community. Thank you.
Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Several things coming up in the district updates. Ziegler Boulevard widening. There has been a road closure at Chalet Drive East that was supposed to be completed this week. Unfortunately, because of the extent of the work, we will have to keep that road closed at least until December fifth. Again, it's just because of the extent of the work that has to be done there, so we just appreciate everybody's patience with that closure. And I just got word today, Langen Park, some of the pavilions up front have been substantially complete. They were just waiting on some parts for the corral up front, while all those parts have come in. So the update is that all of the pavilions, including the ones in the back that are undergoing renovation, should be substantially complete by December sixth, so that's great news. My annual Christmas party is December seventh at the Mobile Museum of Art. Postcards will be going out for that, and we have a public safety committee meeting coming up on December fourteenth. We'll be making some more information available about the topic to be discussed there, and I want to join my colleagues in wishing everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. If your plans call to be on the road, safe travels. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Yes, Mr. President, if I could take another point of personal privilege, it is basketball season, and the City of Mobile has a program that is tremendous, and it goes overlooked sometimes. So I'd like the director of Parks and Recreation, if it's all right with the mayor, to come to the podium and tell everybody about our program that we have in the city so that the parents and everybody else out there can hear us, so that there's anyone that like to sign up, their kid or someone in the proper age group to play in the program. Also, a plug for Texas Street or anybody that wants to play. If you are a girl or a boy, come sign up at Texas Street. I think it started on the twenty-second, right? But she's going to tell us more, but I would love and I'd be more than willing to coach a girls' basketball team because I do want to beat my colleague down the table here. He's already boasting that they're going to beat us, so if you would, Shonda, please talk about the city's program.
Good morning. So it is basketball season. We're doing registration. One of the things we are pushing this year to be different than other years is to actually intentionally have a girls' basketball program. We've always had sports, but we've never had individual girl programming. They've always had to play with the boys. So we are intentionally looking for girl basketball coaches because we have to have the coaches before we have the kids, so I am glad that William Carroll has decided to coach. I'm thinking I'm throwing my hat in there as well to get into this competition because it's going to be real bad when you get beat by women's coach with the girls' team, but we're going to call that out. But we are actively looking for coaches, and we are registering now for basketball. We have all of our twelve centers that have a league, but we also, Boys and Girls Club partner with us and a couple of other organizations partner with us to participate as well. So if you are interested, please go to any center, or you can follow us on our Mobile Parks and Recreation page. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I said, the city has so many opportunities where we can have our youth involved with programs and involved with so many people in our cities, from ministers to coaches, even police officers that coach on their spare time, and it's a tremendous asset that I ask that we all take advantage of. So many of our kids like to hang inside and play video games and play better basketball with their thumbs than they do with their hands and their feet, and I'd love to see them out again. I had the opportunity to go out and participate with the Turkey Bowl and the Turkey giveaway this weekend with the Senior Bowl. It's a tremendously good time to be out and about with the community and have a vested interest in the holiday. It's the most wonderful time of the year for me. My dad loved Christmas. He made it for us. He made it from this day forward, and I look forward to everyone having a healthy and happy holiday season.
All right. Councilman Jones?
You know, if you can't get a team, William, maybe you and Cory could go one-on-one, and we'll officiate that.
I don't think he can beat me.
Challenge. I'd like to thank the mayor and the public safety officials who came out last Thursday. We had a wonderful community meeting, and we talked about some of the issues that the city is facing. You know, it was a fantastic meeting with a lot of great insight and a lot of great action items that we'll be moving forward with. You know, I get asked a question a lot, what's it take to make a good city councilman? And the answer to that has always been very easy, and I think my colleagues would agree. You have to have a passion for the people, and you have to have a passion for this city. This week, I've watched in TV and news and in our email box when we got a letter from the Southern Poverty Law Center that sent a warning to the city council and to the mayor about advising us to have more minority representation on the city council. I would tell you, instead of a warning, they should have been sending us a congratulatory note. Because if you look at the City of Mobile right now, we should be celebrating the fact that we have five diverse minority-majority districts out of seven. So if you do the math, that's quite a significant minority-majority portion of the City of Mobile. They talk about free and fair elections to gain more representation, and I would argue back that relationships rise above race. And you can look on the representation of this current city council and make that argument when you have a minority-majority district who overwhelmingly elected two officials, one at seventy-five percent of the vote, one at eighty-two percent of the vote. You elected a mayor with sixty-two percent of the vote with a forty-three percent white majority in the city. So I submit to you, it's not about race. It's about relationships, and I think this city should be applauded for the diversity in the actions that we take to unite and move together as one. Matthew tells us in the scriptures that a kingdom divided against itself cannot stand. An email such as this that chooses to divide us along racial barriers is an attack on the city. And I'm going to sit here today and call it out as such because we've worked too hard for too long. We celebrate Africa Town to the airport, and we do that arm-in-arm. This city is about unity and about excellence and about celebration, and I hope as we go into Thanksgiving, that's exactly what it is. Y'all have a great Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones, and greetings to the citizens of District Three. We have a lot to be thankful for. Last Friday was a day that many residents in the Odell community never thought they would ever see. Some say, you know, it's been thirty years, some say it's been fifty years, but however, Baltimore Street is now complete, and for that, that's enough to be really just be thankful for because of so much doubt that had been going through many citizens and not just only in the Odell community, but surrounding areas that had to travel up and down Baltimore Street. Last Friday was another great and thankful day in the City of Mobile, and again, I'd like to, you know, send out special thanks to Malls and Monsieur Lovegill Commissioner for pay-as-you-go, the previous council, and also the administration, because it wasn't for all of us, we're just working together. You know, last Friday probably would not happen on a last Friday. And again, we have many, many things to be grateful for, but again, one of the most important things this past year I'm grateful for is the completion of Baltimore Street. District Three, please mark your calendars for holiday celebrations that's coming up. I named this a day in District Three and House 103 on DIP. On Saturday, December the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, we will celebrate with the residents of District Three and State House 103 with a holiday celebration beginning at ten o'clock a.m. at the entrance of the Guffdale Plaza Shopping Center. There will be a community event sponsored by Revitalize DIP, inviting all the citizens to come out for a day of fun at this fall activity celebration that they are planning for the community. That will be, again, that will be- That will begin, that will begin at 10:00 a.m. and end at 1:00 p.m. There will be drinks, games, a car show, and entertainment. Following in that will be the parades of threes at 2:00 p.m. This will be our sixth parade going down Dolphin Island Parkway. Many residents have been asking me for the past six, seven, or more months, you know, are we going to have a parade this year? And we actually had to really watch to see what the COVID numbers was going to look like before we announced the parade. So Representative Barbara Drummond and myself went ahead, said we were going to go ahead and strike this, and many residents started smiling when we announced that we were going to go forth with the parade. Again, this would take place on December 11th at 2:00 p.m., starting at the B.C. Rain High School, and we're in at the Palmer Pillins Middle School on Old Military Road. And again, this is not just for the residents of District 3 or House 103, it's for all the citizens in Mobile. Also, on Tuesday, December 14th, we will have our community holiday event. This would take place at the Palmer Pillins Middle School also. We will have entertainment by area students at the schools, and also we'll recognize some community leaders and while we fellowship among each other. Again, this would take place on December 14th, which is a Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. And we are asking people to also bring non-perishable items for residents in our local nursing homes. Suggestion items are socks, two breasts, two paces, pajamas, house slippers, lip balm, unscented lotion, unscented baby powder, blanket, hairbrush, cones, and et cetera. And again, we will be collecting this at the Palmer Pillin Middle School on Tuesday, December 14th at 6:00 p.m., where there will be plenty of fun, food, and fellowship. And that would be it for my announcements. Anything else from the council? Anything from the administration?
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Just want to reiterate and add a little bit to what Mayor Stimson was announcing earlier. If you're like me and got a house full of people for Thanksgiving and looking for something for them to do, it starts Friday night, if you're not doing LaFlore activities. But Friday night at Medal of Honor, we have our quarterly concert. If you're tracking us, we do, we've been trying to do quarterly concerts every quarter. This one will be at Medal of Honor. We have Yeah, Probably and Jamelle Richardson performing, so come out with your chair and your blanket so you can stay warm. And then on Saturday, we kick off the Iron Bowl Block Party. We have a 27-foot, I think they said, LED screen, we're going to have a band out there, bring your chair, and then also at the same time, we're doing a small business Saturday to get small businesses out there. And on December 4th, the following Saturday, we'll be at Cooper Riverside doing a holiday bazaar, which is the same setup. Thank you.
Boy, you need to raise all this stuff you got going on in the city of Mobile, man. And again, to clarify, the day of the parade is December 11th, December 11th. Anything else from the council? Can I get a motion for the adjournance meeting?
Some moved.
Can I get a second? Promptly moved to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, meetings adjourned.